President.
Councilmember Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Present.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember McElDowney.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, we are all here this evening. Want to start off, we're gonna have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. However, before we get into that, I want to make everyone aware of a few things to keep in mind for the moment of silence. We lost a longtime resident and a person who served on a lot of our boards and commissions over the years. Actually, is the guy who raised Buffalo up on 112th Avenue is how Buffalo Run got its name, and also was the owner of the Mountain Man Steakhouse and raised his own Buffalo meat for the Mountain Man Steakhouse back in the day. Longtime resident, very involved with the city. Dell Hensel passed away last Saturday. Really, a good guy. I've known him most of my life. Also was the owner of Dell's Liquor across the street here. So, he passed on Saturday, so keep him and his family in your prayers. Also, today is Purple Heart Day. So, I didn't even know there was a Purple Heart Day, but the city manager found some information that today is Purple Heart Day. Says during the American Revolutionary War, the badge of the military merit decorated six known soldiers. Purple Heart Day on August 7th, which commemorates the creation of the oldest American military decoration for military merit, the Purple Heart, and honors the men and women who are of the military order of the Purple Heart. So, keep in mind all those who have fought and were wounded in action for our freedoms. So, if you would, please stand and join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I'd like to ask the staff to pass the microphone around, allow the audience to introduce themselves, please.
Yerma Serna.
Thank you.
Charles Wolfersberger.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Ryan Lance, Human Resources.
Jen Smith, Human Resources.
Jen Lorenzen, Human Resources.
Ken Evans, Deputy Chief of Police.
Good evening, Brett Walker, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Cheryl Kirstens, Finance.
Shirley Messick, Chair of the Employee Activity Committee and Human Resources.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Daniela Villarreal, Community Liaison.
Ed Hanson, Commerce City Cultural Council.
All right, thank you all for being here this evening. I'm gonna start off with proclamations and recognitions, and August happens to be Employee Appreciation Month, and thank you to all the employees who are here this evening and for all of those who didn't make it. We truly appreciate all of you and what you do for our community. So, I'd like to invite the Employee Activity Chair Shirley Forward. I'd like to ask the city attorney to read this proclamation that's before us.
Whereas Commerce City desires to build a quality community for a lifetime for growing a community of more than 53,000 residents and 1,300 businesses, and whereas the city's employees numbering more than 650, including seasonal and variable hours, strive to achieve this mission on a daily basis, providing excellent public services and customer experiences by anticipating needs, embracing diversity, and fostering relationships to sustain a growing and vibrant community. Whereas the most recent citizen survey reaffirmed employees' success in meeting our constituents' expectations, and whereas it is important to recognize employees' contributions through quality customer service and demonstrating their values of integrity, collaboration, innovation, respect, and excellence, and whereas the City Council of the City of Commerce City wishes to recognize and reward employees for their dedicated service and outstanding achievements. Now, therefore, on behalf of the City Council, I hereby proclaim the month of August 2017 as Employee Appreciation Month, thanking the city's employees for all of their hard work and dedication to the City of Commerce City.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proclamation as read.
Thank you. Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Shirley?
I want to thank you on behalf of myself and... Thank you. I want to thank the council and the mayor on behalf of all of my fellow employees and as the Chair of the Employee Activity Committee, so thank you very much.
Absolutely, and I think it's important that we say at least a few things. You know, I was an employee for 10 years before I became an elected official, and I know the dedication and work ethics of the employees that I worked with many years ago. And I know that we have some of the best people working for the city that anybody could ask for. A lot of dedicated people that come to work every day, do their job, they don't complain all the time, and they enjoy doing what they do. It doesn't matter if you're shoveling asphalt in a street, patching holes like I did, or if you're at the rec center late at night doing janitorial work, or maintenance of buildings, or if you're in HR and processing insurance stuff for the other employees, or, you know, there's so many different fashions, and for me to see the employment base of the city grow from what it did back in 1990, when I started working for the city, to what it is today, is significant. But look at all the things that are happening, and we as a council have to always remember that when we decide to do things like take over and widen Highway 2, that it means that we have to have more employees. When we start adding outdoor water parks and new rec centers and things of that nature, it's more employees. As the city grows now over 53,000 in population, we have to add more police officers to keep everybody safe, and it's, when you really start looking at everything underneath of that realm of what we do, the compounded interest in employees within our organization is unbelievable, and right now, it's not easy to find good employees. And I've always made it a point, and I know I've always had a council that supported having a point to try to improve morale and make things better so that we can keep those long-term employees here at the city. So, I want to give a special thank you to every employee of the City of Commerce City.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. McElDowney, do you have any?
I think I'm just gonna echo your comments. That was well said. Thank you.
All right, well, if the council will please join me down front, I'd like all the employees in the room, including the city manager, come on up, and we're gonna have a photo, and maybe we can get Garamo or the security guard to take the photo so nobody misses out. And I'm sure the city manager's gonna be doing some special things for the employees for Employee Appreciation Month. Right, Brian? Pancakes? All right. Next item on the agenda. Citizen Communication. Per City Council policy, Citizen Communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address Council on Businesses and Affairs of the City. The City Council is not able to hear comments on land use matters that are before or may become before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. City policy prohibits campaigning during Citizen Communication, and I'm reading this because, not that I see anybody campaigning, but we're getting into the season of campaigning, and I have to be ready for it. So, we don't allow the campaigning. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes, and after you, after we've heard from everybody, then we'll move on. So, we have one person that has signed up for Citizen Communication this evening, and I'd like to invite Mr. Ed Hanson to the podium, and I need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ed Hanson. I live at 7630 Leyden Lane in Commerce City, and tonight, I'm here to recognize the efforts and the support provided by the City Council and the Parks and Recreation Department in the help that they gave to our recently concluded Music in the Park Summer Concert Series. I have two letters of thank you I would like to read. The first one is addressed to the City Council itself. Dear Mayor Sean Ford and venerable City Council members, on behalf of the Commerce City Cultural Council, I would like to express our gratitude for your support in the success of this year's Music in the Park Concert Series. Your generous donation of $5,000 and participation in the events supports our mission to bring together residents of Commerce City to help advance charity and education, to preserve art, music, theater, and dance in our city. Year after year, we have seen an increase in resident participation, and this year was no exception. Approximately 1,700 individuals enjoyed our free concert series with 13 local food trucks and four great bands. Thank you again for helping us to build a quality community for a lifetime. We gratefully acknowledge all of your support. Ed Hanson, President, Commerce City Cultural Council.
Thank you.
And this is for the Parks and Rec Department. Dear Mr. Moore, on behalf of the Commerce City Cultural Council, I would like to thank the Commerce City Parks and Recreation staff for all of the hard work of setting up and taking down the concert sites, as well as handling our signage during our Music in the Park Concert Series. Your time and assistance helps further our mission to bring together residents of Commerce City to help advance charity and education, to preserve art, music, theater, and dance in our city. Year after year, we have seen an increase in resident participation, and this year was no exception. Approximately 1,700 individuals enjoyed our free concert series with 13 local food trucks and four great bands. We could not accomplish this without your help and support. Thank you again for contributing to build a quality community for a lifetime. We gratefully acknowledge all of your hard work and support. Edward Hanson, President, Commerce City Cultural Council. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. I do have to tell you, I did make it out to one of the concerts in the parks. I was amazed at the turnout you're getting from the neighborhoods.
It was good.
It has really, really been great to see, and the other thing that you mentioned that I have to give a shout out to the Parks Department, because they set up the little awnings and everything else, and they are so attentive and making sure they take it downtime. I mean, I was thoroughly impressed with their being attentive to the event, so keep up the good work. It's great for our community to have these events, and really was appreciative of them this year. So were our residents. Councilwoman Carson.
Ed, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for thanking everyone, but I'd like to take time to thank you. Thank you for being the president. I would like to thank all members who give up their time and serve on the Commerce City Cultural Council. As the mayor said, the growth that we have experienced has just been phenomenal, and I know what kind of work and commitment and passion our members have, so thank you to everyone, and thank you to the city. Thank you to the councilors who support, supporting and backing the Commerce City Cultural Council, so thank you.
All righty, thanks, Ed.
Can I give these to?
Right here to the attorney. We'll make sure we have them. Thank you very much. All right, even though there's only one person signed up, I'm gonna ask, before I move on, is there anybody else in the audience who wants to speak during Citizen Communication this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move forward. Next is approval of the minutes. We have the meeting minutes of January 9th, 2017. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we take up the minutes of March 20th, 2017. I need to ask for a motion and a second to allow myself and Councilmember Teeter to abstain from voting on the minutes of March 20th because of an excused absence. Mr. Bullock.
Move to allow you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Teeter to abstain from this minutes meet.
Thank you. Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the abstention signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2017. Mr. Amador.
Move to approve meeting minutes of March 20th, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2017. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we have the minutes of April 3rd, 2017. I need a motion and a second to allow Councilmember Carson to abstain from voting on the minutes of April 3rd, 2017 because of an excused absence. Mr. McElDowney.
So moved.
Mr. Bullock.
Second.
All those in favor of the abstention signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 3rd. Mr. Teeter.
Motion to approve the April 3rd, 2017 minutes.
Thank you. Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we have the minutes of May 1st, 2017. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 1st, 2017. Mr. McElDowney.
Move to approve.
Minutes of May 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. The minutes of May 1st, 2017 are approved. Next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are 14 items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the Consent Agenda for further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Bullock, what item do you want to pull?
Move to pull item 2017-56, Resolution Amending the Directory and City Fees and Charges.
Okay, 2017-56. Is there any others? Ms. Carson.
2017-67, Members to the Senior Commission.
Okay. I have 2017-56 and 2017-67. Are there any others? Seeing none. We'll move forward. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, and I'll have the titles read. Mr. McElDowney.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Thank you. Ms. Carson.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the remaining titles of the Consent Agenda?
Ordinance 2134, An Ordinance Amending the 2017 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance of the General Fund in the Amount of $471,197 and Transferring a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance in the General Fund to the CIPP Fund in the Amount of $305,561, transferring $42,310 from the Information Technology Fund to the CIPP Fund, and Appropriating a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance in the NIGID Fund in the Amount of $68,565, the Fleet Fund in the Amount of $47,517, Urban Renewal Authority Fund in the Amount of $102,248, and the Police Donation Fund in the Amount of $45,622 for a total amount of $1,083,020 in authorizing the expenditure thereof. AN-245-17, An Ordinance Approving and Accomplishing the Annexation of Contiguous Unincorporated Territory Described in Exhibit A Attached Here To and Made Apart Hereof, Generally Located North of East 104th Avenue and West of Chambers Road, Commerce City, Colorado. Z-781-0204-0506, 1017, An Ordinance Approving the Reunion PUD Document Amendment Number Four. Resolution 2017-72, A Resolution Authorizing Assignment to the Colorado Housing and Financing Authority of a Private Activity Bond Allocation of the City of Commerce City pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. Resolution 2017-73, Resolution Approving Amendment to Contract for Highway 2 Widening Professional Services. Resolution 2017-75, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation, AN-239-17. Resolution 2017-76, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation, AN-240-17. Resolution 2017-77, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation, AN-247-17. Resolution 2017-78, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance of an Annexation Petition and Setting a Public Hearing to Determine if the Proposed Annexation Complies with Statutory Requirements for Such Annexation, AN-248-17. Resolution 2017-82, Resolution Authorizing and Referring a Ballot Issue for the November 2017 Regular Election to Propose a 5% Excise Tax on the Wholesale Transfer of Marijuana and Marijuana Products to Promote Public Safety and Setting the Ballot Language and Providing Other Matters Related There Too. Resolution 2017-84, Resolution Approving Second Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for Design Services. Resolution 2017-85, Resolution Amending Council Policy Number CP-5 Regarding Council Expenditures for Authorized Events and Travel.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Titles have all been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the Consent Agenda has been approved unanimously this evening. Now, we have the two items that were pulled. We'll start with Resolution 2017-56, which is a resolution amending the directory of city fees and charges. Mr. Bullock.
Yes, on that resolution, I think there is some council, we would like to keep some of the present fees as they are now, as opposed to raising them right now in order to give the families up north a chance to acclimate and everything to the new rec center as the families down in the southern part of the city have, and I think that there are other council members on here that would like to also weigh in on it, and I think Ms. Carson is one of them.
Well, I'll ask, concerning Resolution 56, is there any other discussion? I have Councilwoman Carson. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bullock. You have addressed my concerns as to, when I speak with citizens in the northern range and survey to see which one of our seniors have a senior recreation pass so that they can be grandfathered into this program, I really have found none. So, I will say that it almost seems unfair, I think, to say we're gonna grandfather you in, but you weren't even using this program to begin with. So, I don't have, I think the fee is fair, but I don't think it's fair to do, the second that you open a new facility that residents in that area have not been using a recreation facility within our city. They have been paying the fees for non-resident to partnering cities, so they have never been able to use that senior resident fee, because it wouldn't make sense for them, first of all, to drive that distance, and it just has not been convenient. So, now that it's convenient, and like I said, I fully understand, I've had a good explanation to me of the grandfathering in, but I would like to give them a year or so to get their recreation cards, and then we'll grandfather you in, so if you did not sign up within that first year, 18 months, I would prefer 18 months, then it can automatically increase to that, but at least they've had 18 months or so to realize there is a recreation center that seniors do get this rate, and it's your chance to take an opportunity for it. Silver Sneakers is not covered by every one of our seniors. It's a program within itself, so that's my problem with this fee presentation that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you. My concern with the fees, I'm okay with the adult participation, and I echo Councilwoman Carson, what she's suggesting, but our children are youth. I think they're gonna be hit the most, you know, mainly because they don't have jobs, the fees and monetary is gonna come from their parents, so I would love to see the rates that are currently have for the youth and child remain for a certain period of time, like, come back to this in five years, but I think that 1% sales tax helps us with those fees, because when we look at comparisons of Brighton, Broomfield, Denver, Thornton, Westminster, now, one of those cities have a 1% sales tax that was passed to help with the operation and maintenance for parks and recs, and I think that's a great resource for us to use. And know, as the city grows, we're gonna have more retail come in and to help out with that, but I think the city can get by with the current fees that we charge child and youth across the board, so I would like to see that stay the same and not change with this reflection of the increasing prices.
All right, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a suggestion. Based on the comments from the council members who spoke, if there's no objection, we could simply revise the directory of fees and put it back on a future agenda, just to make sure everybody's clear what's being approved. The fees won't become effective until January 1st of 2018, so we have time to revise the fee schedule, update the resolution, and bring to revise the fee schedule, update the resolution, and bring it back at a future meeting. The alternative is council can certainly make the amendments tonight, but if you'd rather, we'd be happy to bring it back.
Okay, I was gonna make a motion to, um, just bring it back to a study session, a future quick study session, so we could do just what you said and amend this, so on January first, two thousand eighteen, uh, we could amend them to the, and discuss them and talk about them, as far as the senior and the youth and children's, and do exactly what you said, so on two thousand eighteen, on the first, they would be ready to roll out.
We could absolutely bring back, um, a revised version next week, give council a chance to take, uh, a look at it, and then still put it on for the regular meeting of August twenty-first.
Ed, do you want a motion or not?
That's cleanest.
Yep.
If council would, uh, refer it to next week's study session, and then have a comeback on the twenty-first for final action.
Well, in that way, the council can all weigh in if they so desire. Mr. Bullock.
So move on what the city manager just said.
Thank you, Mr. McElhany.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to defer, uh, the city fees and charges back to the study session next week, um, and then to be heard on the twenty-first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item, twenty seventeen dash sixty-seven, resolution appointing members to the senior commission. Councilwoman Carson.
Well, I only pulled that resolution just because I wanted to take a minute to recognize the appointment of our inaugural members of the senior commission, um, and I also wanted to take the time to thank Michelle Halsted, thank you for your work and commitment to this creation of the senior commission.
Great, you wanna remind us who the members are?
Oh, you want me to read the list?
Yes. I just figured out, if you were gonna pull it, you might as well.
Fine with me, I thought you'd get mad if I went. Um, so, let's see, so it's Bruce Emery, Carol Harville, Jeanie Lovridge, George Maxi, Tilly Bejara, Susan Carbajal, Carlita Plummer, Bruce Riley, Jean Smith, Alternates or Thelma Cole, and Charles Crist, and ex-officio is the City of Commerce City, the Senior Hub, and Adams County Senior Services. Thank you, everyone, for taking the interest and applying to set on this very important new commission.
Great, so is there a motion?
Move to approve, resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-seven.
Thank you, is there a second? Mr. McElhany.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. That takes us through the consent agenda. Now we'll move into public hearings, we'll start with C U dash eight one dash zero eight dash one zero dash one two dash one seven, and C U dash eight two dash zero eight dash one zero dash one two dash one seven. The next two items need to be continued because the applicant was unable to attend this meeting, so I'm open for a motion and a second to continue, C U eight one oh eight ten twelve seventeen to a date to be determined, and is there a motion, Mr. McElhany?
Move to continue, uh, C U dash eighty-one dash oh eight ten twelve seventeen, C U eighty-one, uh, the two Rocky Mountain recycling, C U piece, to a date TBD.
Uh, we need to continue those separately, or can they be lumped together?
Continue them together.
All right, so, Mr. McElhany just lumped them together in his motion, Mr. Amador, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we have resolutions, twenty seventeen dash sixty-five, twenty seventeen dash sixty-six, and twenty seventeen dash seventy-one. The next three items will be heard under one public hearing but voted on separately. I'm gonna open the public hearing and invite the staff forward to give their presentation. Mr. Timms.
Mayor Ford, due to an, uh, error in the publication, uh, with our publication agent, only one of these was properly noticed for this evening, the, uh, High Point matter, so we would, um, ask to continue, uh, the Potomac Farms in Buffalo Run Mesa matter until the September eighteenth meeting, um, and so if there could be a motion to continue those two matters, and then the other one would, um...
We can hear the other one?
You can hear the other one, that one was properly posted.
All right, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bullock.
Move to continue, uh, twenty-two thousand seventeen days, um, sixty-five and two thousand seventeen days seventy-one.
Are those the right ones? Yes.
That's correct?
Yep.
All right, Mr. McElhany.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-five and twenty seventeen dash seventy-one because of, uh, wasn't posted properly. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We have resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-six to hear, we have Mr. Timms up here to give us, uh, a presentation.
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor, members of council, do have a quick presentation on this one, uh, amendment to the metro district, this is for the resolution and also case M D one oh four dash seventeen, an amended and restated service plan for the High Point, uh, metro district. I will be skipping through some of the slides just because of those two continued cases, so, um, just bear with me if you would. The, uh, particular property, um, in High Point, um, it's also known as Harvest Meadows, is located there on Chambers Road, uh, around the one hundredth, um, this map shows Chambers running north-south, and then one hundredth here with Frontera Development right across the street. The, uh, High Point Development, it's about forty acres, and it is currently zoned R one, uh, for residential development, there is no other, uh, zoning in place, no other land uses, uh, in the High Point Harvest Meadows Development. Uh, the purpose of the metro district and service plan, um, so the metro district, it does finance the construction of public improvements, um, for the use and benefit of the taxpayers of that district, in this particular case, the, uh, the property owners within the High Point, uh, subdivision. The service plan does authorize the metro district to issue debt to provide the public improvements, um, such as building, um, the streets and the sidewalks and the streetlights, um, private parks, et cetera, and then that debt is paid by the district through fees and tax revenues collected from the property tax mill levy, and, uh, district debt is not an obligation of the city and does not impact the city's budget, so it's entirely separate, uh, budget and entirely separate obligation. So, on this particular one, um, we're focused here on this middle one, High Point, and so the original, um, metro district service plan was, uh, approved by city council in two thousand four. The purpose of the change is to remove the mill cap, uh, mill levy cap currently at fifty, and the rationale for that, uh, change is basically to refinance a lower interest rate, I believe in your packets on the cover page, um, they were paying a higher interest rate, and by removing this mill levy cap, um, it gives the opportunity to refinance and lower that interest rate, um, it does, uh, that lower interest rate then will, uh, lower the interest cost on its debt, and then they can pass on that savings to the property, uh, owners within High Point and Harvest Meadows. Uh, one thing that we look at is the infrastructure obligations complete, so all the roads have been built out there in High Point, um, so there should be no more expenditures in terms of infrastructure. And then the attachments in your packet include the legal description, the vicinity map, and an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the, uh, metro district. So, this, uh, particular application was reviewed by, uh, various city departments, including planning, public works, uh, city attorney's office, city manager's office, finance, and, uh, they make up the development review team, they do recommend that city council approve this particular, um, amended and restated service plan for the M D one oh four seventeen High Point, uh, subdivision. And with that, that concludes my presentation, the applicant is here to, uh, answer any questions as well.
Great, thank you. I'd like to invite the representative for the district forward to provide any additional information, uh, that he may have, and to also be able to answer questions that the council may have. Good evening, thank you for being here tonight.
Hello, appreciate your, uh...
That's all.
That's all.
Yep.
Hello, and appreciate your time.
Great, um, do you have any additional information you wanna add?
Um, no, I think Steve covered everything.
Okay.
It's, uh, the main goal here is just to get, uh, talking about the underwriters, uh, homeowners just wanna get a lower interest rate on the debt, and, uh, hopefully this is the last time we have to refinance the debt, uh, for the district, so that's just the ultimate goal, is get as low a rate as possible.
Sure. All right, I'm going to the council, do you have any questions of the applicant at this time? Mr. McElhany?
No.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir, I do. I was at a conference last week, Effective Governance, and in one of the classes that we had, um, we talked about, uh, different, um, metro districts and everything, and we were notified that a lot of metro districts, even after they're paid off, keep going because nobody ever asks them when they're going to stop. When is this metro district going to be paid off where that the citizens will not be paying that mill level, you know, even go down further?
Right, and, in this case, um, I believe, I, I think the debt still has about twenty, twenty-five years left to pay off on the debt, um, the goal is when we refinance that we're gonna keep that at twenty-five, or possibly shave off a few more years on the back end of that debt to get it paid off quicker, um, however, this is one of those districts, and it's been a while since I've spoken with council, but I've, I've talked in the past about these combinations of, uh, combining HOAs into metropolitan districts, um, in this case, High Point has done that where, uh, they've basically dissolved their homeowners association, transferred the covenant enforcement and other, uh, neighborhood services to the metro district, uh, the homeowners now run that metro district, the developer no longer controls or runs the district, um, so, once the debt is paid off, you still have, essentially, the, the metro district will be there forever unless the homeowners decide to get rid of the covenants for their neighborhood, and it, it's basically going to, it, serve the function of that homeowners association, and so there still will be a cost, but rather than paying that through HOA dues, homeowners are paying that cost through the property taxes, and, um, and they, the other motivation there is there's still also a little benefit tax-wise, the, the property taxes are deductible on the homeowner's tax returns, whereas the HOA dues are not, and have all the collection costs with HOA dues that you don't have with, with property taxes, so, so the homeowners in these neighborhoods, they prefer to, to put it into the district for other cost reasons, so, so that's my long-winded answer to your question.
Is there a reinvestment savings in this metro district where there's money that is being put aside that in case, uh, for assessments or anything else, that this metro district actually pays to pay for itself in the future?
Uh, there is a, a capital reserve fund that we've started for the district, which will pay for, uh, basically replacement of, of, uh, park assets, playground equipment, perimeter fencing, um, there's, I'm trying to think what other assets, there's not many assets in the neighborhood that the district maintains, but, uh, the goal there is we'll keep about a hundred thousand dollar reserve fund to replace and maintain those assets and, and, and have that, uh, that savings there for, uh, for the neighborhood.
Okay, does the metro district post, um, a declining cost of showing how much it's going down each year, like, uh, with your mortgage, you know, you have a thirty-year mortgage, and it shows, so the people in the metro district, they can see when they will be paid off, and, you know, when they'll see that light at the end of the tunnel. I mean, these are all suggestions that I heard last week, that most metro districts keep their residents in the dark, is your metro district completely transparent?
It is, actually, and I, and I can say that confidently, because, um, one of the, uh, and that's been a, I'll try to be brief on this, but that's been one of my concerns I notice with a lot of metropolitan districts out there, is when developers finance these districts and build out, especially new neighborhoods, um, all they have to report to homeowners who purchase houses in these neighborhoods is what's the property tax cost in the next year, or the next five years, but when they, when they finance these bonds, the bonds are, it's not a balloon payment, but they have increasing payments, because all these models assume that your house, ten years from now is gonna be worth fifty percent more than it is today, so they'll just increase the bond payment by fifty percent, or, or whatever the number is, so you have these increasing rates over time, assuming that everything's gonna go well in the economy, um, with High Point in particular, they also have an increasing debt curve, where they're gonna be paying more in future years than they are today, and that's one of the other goals of this refinancing, and that's with these other districts as well, where homeowners have now assumed control from the developer running their own districts, is all they want is just a flat payment, what they're gonna pay this year is gonna be the same they're gonna pay next year, it's gonna be the same that they're gonna pay ten years from now, and then whenever that cliff occurs, and in, in High Point's case, it's about twen-, it's between twenty and twenty-five years from now, that debt will be paid off and will be done with that, and that's a, that'll be a big drop in property taxes for, for that neighborhood, but, but their goal and their concern is, um, that they don't wanna have to keep paying, that they're locked into these ten, twenty percent tax increases just because the debt has an inclining curve on principal and interest payments, and so, yeah, and all these districts are being submitted, and I guess there'll be the two others in September, is the homeowners on those boards now, they want a flat debt payment, so that they know what their cost is, it's gonna be the same every year going forward.
And the interest rate won't affect, uh, what they're paying, if it goes up, they still pay that same flat, uh, fee?
Yeah, exactly, and it's a, it's a fixed, they're, all, in all three of these neighborhoods, they, they're getting fixed interest rate, uh, and, fixed interest rate loans, and, uh, yeah, so that's, um, that's the goal with the debt refinancing.
Thank you, those are all my questions.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, thank you for, uh, coming out today and, and answering questions. I do remember you coming to the city and, and asking us, uh, about that process and what you could do. Um, Renee went over several things, amersation of, of the schedule of as far as payment with the interest and principal, um, question I have is the operational cost, uh, for Harvest Meadow, it states here it's a hundred and forty thousand eight hundred a year, is that right?
Uh, that sounds about right, correct.
Okay, and right now, as far as services for the residents, it's pretty much mowing the park, uh, anything with the sidewalk or streets, city responsibility, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, and then, um, I know publication-wise, where did you, uh, put this through as far as publication, the hub, the Rocky Mountain newspaper?
Um, it was, uh, sorry, oh, for, for the revised, for the service plan, the proposed amendment, I think, was it, uh...
This particular one was posted in the Denver Post.
Denver Post, okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right, um, let's see, the other thing too, now, you're just gonna do each metro district separate, you weren't gonna combine all three and try to get the lowest rate by combining all three, correct?
No, only, yeah, it's, it gets too messy and political when you start trying to combine districts together, although there's probably some more cost savings you could create, but, um, the homeowners in each neighborhood basically wanna run their own neighborhood and not intermingle with other neighborhoods, so...
And then, this will be also overseen by the board within, the, what the current board is right now, for Harvest Meadow, correct?
Correct, which is, uh, all five board members are homeowners who live in the neighborhood.
So they'll be able to approve any kind of cost increase as far as your operational, uh, expenses in maintenance?
Yeah, and I think, well, I think in this case, um, if anything, operation costs will go down over time, um, you had an HOA that was, uh, had very little money, was actually going in the wrong direction, digging into their savings to fund operations, uh, by combining the two organizations, the district and the HOA, uh, administrative costs, when you looked at those two financial statements separately in past years, uh, after we combined, it was about forty thousand dollars of administrative costs that we chopped out of the budget, um, but the board has not yet passed that savings on to the homeowners, they instead have been putting that into park improvements, putting in the pavilion, there's gonna be a basket... There's gonna be a basketball court built possibly next year. And so those items, once they're through those major capital improvements in their park and they have the park where they want it, uh, then they don't need that money anymore. And they'll have a fully reserved, uh, funded reserve to replace those assets over the long period of time. So that, so if anything, there'll be likely the operational piece of the mill levy will go down over time.
Okay, and I know we're just talking about High Point here, um, in years, I think it says forty years. Um, is that the term?
Um, I don't, uh, know, the goal's not, I think there's twenty-five years left on the debt, um, and their goal is to not extend it any further than what it is right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, seeing no others, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you for talking.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address council on the High Point, High Point Metropolitan District, uh, issue that's before us tonight? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I'm open for a motion in a second to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-six. Mr. McAdonny?
Move to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash sixty-six.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution twenty seventeen dash six-six, Resolution approving both the amended and restated High Point Metropolitan District Service Plan and the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the High Point Metropolitan District.
Thank you, I have a motion in a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll hear the other two in September, I'm sure. Move to ordinances on first reading. Ordinance twenty-one, twen-, two-one-four-zero. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none? Is there anyone, anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on ordinance twenty-one forty? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance twenty-one forty by council as seated. Mr. Teeter?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-one forty, council is seated.
Thank you, Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance twenty-one forty, an ordinance amending the twenty seventeen budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Tony Gramps Youth Services Grant Funds in the amount of fifty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars for the support of the Youth Epic Program and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you, I have a motion in a second. Title's been read. I need a roll call vote, please. For the record, city council has introduced twenty-one forty unanimously this evening. Now we have ordinance twenty-one forty-one. Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on ordinance twenty-one forty-one? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion in a second to introduce ordinance twenty-one forty-one. Council is seated. Mr. Amador?
Move to approve ordinance twenty-one forty-one on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance two-one-four-one, an ordinance amending the twenty seventeen budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Greater Outdoors Colorado Implementation Grant Funds in the amount of one million eight hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars for the support of the programs, places, and pathways, projects, Go Wild, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance twenty-one forty-one is introduced unanimously by the city council seating. We move to ordinances on second reading. We have ordinance twenty-one thirty. The bond attorney has recommended an amendment to the finance document since this ordinance was introduced by council and approved on first reading. Is there anyone in who, in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on ordinance twenty-one thirty? Seeing none? I'm open for a motion in a second to amend ordinance twenty-one thirty at section four, subparagraph E, by striking one point five million and replacing with nine million. Mr. McAdonny?
Move to approve, uh, or rather, yeah, approve ordinance twenty-one thirty, or I'm sorry, amend ordinance twenty-one thirty as, as outlined.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to make that, uh, or amendment to that ordinance. I need, uh, I have a motion in a second. I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now I'm open for a motion in a second to approve ordinance twenty-one thirty as amended on second and final reading. Mr. Bullock?
Move to amend ordinance twenty-one thirty as you said.
Approve the ordinance as amended.
And approve the ordinance as amended.
Thank you, Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance twenty-one thirty, an ordinance authorizing the leasing of certain city property and the execution delivery by the city of a site lease, a lease purchase agreement, and other financing documents in connection therewith, setting forth parameters and restrictions with respect to the financing, ratifying action previously taken concerning the referenced transactions, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Thank you, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance twenty-one thirty as amended has been approved on second reading unanimously by the city council. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business, and we have a few things to take care of. Um, I would like to ask, uh, Director of External Affairs Halsted to begin the discussion regarding a council appointment.
Good evening, mayor, and members of council. In front of you is a letter
This one here?
... recommendation, um, supporting Councilman Douglas's nomination to the Environmental Protection Agency's Local Government Advisory Committee. You may recall, I sent this request out to all of you a few weeks ago, or maybe last week, um, looking if there are any interested individuals, and Councilman Douglas responded. So we have started to put that nomination packet together with the support of the National League of Cities, as well as the Colorado Municipal League. And would ask you for a motion to approve his recommend, his appointment and nomination tonight, um, with a letter of support.
Great, thank you. So you guys know what it's about. Um, I want to enter into discussion first. Is there any discussion? I have one thing I want to bring up. I know, uh, Steve personally, I like the guy. I know he's very involved in, uh, environmental type issues. And those issues may be different among council members. I just want to make sure as representation of the council, will we be representing the desires of the council from the standpoint of environmental issues that will be coming before him, uh, at this level? Is that correct, Mr. Douglas?
Correct.
That's all I needed to know. Uh, seeing no other discussion, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Mr. Douglas as the, uh, Environmental Protection Agency Local Government Advisory Committee for the local advisory committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Good luck, Steve. We'll look forward to those reports.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now, Mr. McBroom wants to talk about, uh, Laura would like to request a special meeting to take place on September fifth. Mr. McBroom, you want to tell the council what that would be for?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ford. The purpose of the meeting on Tuesday, September fifth, would be to draw names for the order on the ballot for city council elections in November. Uh, I think a couple of years ago, we did it at a special city council meeting as well, just to draw attention to the process, make sure it's open and public. And, uh, subject to any scrutiny, the, the, the public would like to have on the drawing of names for the ballot. Uh, September fifth is the right timing for that purpose. Uh, but before council taking any action, it made sense to make sure there would be at least five council members available to attend a special meeting on September fifth before you, uh, create a special meeting on that night. So as long as at least five of you can attend, uh, the only business on the agenda that night will be the drawing of names for the ballot, so it should only last ten or fifteen minutes. In fact, there will be a planning commission meeting that night at six-thirty. So would at least five of you be available, and if so, would somebody be willing to make a motion?
Open for a motion, Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve a special meeting for September fifth, um, for the drawing of the ballot names. I can't promise five will be there, but I will be there.
Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I think it's important, the process that we have, um, to ensure transparency. And, uh, I would hope that not only five, but all of the council, if you can make it for the fifteen, twenty minutes that it's gonna take to be here representing that process, I think says a lot, especially to those candidates that will be, um, putting their name in the hat to take the seats of some of the folks that have been on here a long time and set some great policies. So, I encourage all of you, uh, I don't want it to come across as, we, we just need five. I want to come across as it's an important part of the process that we all represent, and I would like to see everybody here. All right, any other administrative business for the council, administrative business? Uh, Mr. Bullock, no?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Um, I'm gonna, um, suggest something here and, and, uh, this is kind of bold and may catch you guys off guard, but I, everyone, I wanted to be when everybody's here on, on city council. You know, we've been, over the years since I've been here, living here, even in, on council, we've, we've had, um, there's always been a burden on our city manager when it comes to our chief of police. And the selection, the whole process, um, right now, the, the city oversees the municipal judge, the city attorney, and city manager. And I'm proposing that, uh, we look at, since this is a charter, would be a charter, charter amendment, that we put it in ballot for our voters to allow the city council to oversee the selection and the, and the governance of our chief of police. This has been a, a, a burden on our city manager, on our city. And I, I think, um, since our city has grown since its charter was made, um, that at this time, I, I feel that would be, uh, something the, the city should do.
All right, there's a lot of names clicking in for discussion, Mr. Douglas. Um, I'll go last. Uh, Mr. Bullock?
Um, I'm gonna disagree with you. Uh, i- i- um, I think that's an overreach on council because if that's a burden on him, then selecting all of his other staff, deputy city managers, uh, personnel managers, and everything would be a burden also. I would love to leave that in his hands because of the fact that I think the real burden would fall on us trying to qualify an adequate candidate for laymen that aren't associated with police work. Uh, I would rather leave it in the city manager's hands and he take a staff proposal and staff members to choose than we do that. Um, I just see it as, um, a falling rock in an avalanche. If this happens, future councils will want to choose everybody that works for the city manager. And, um, I'm confused by the word burden. I don't feel that if we hire adequate personnel and our city manager is one of the ones we hire, it isn't a burden for him because it's something that he's equipped to do better than we are, and I would just leave it at that.
Councilwoman Carson?
Um, I'll have to say I agree with Mr. Bullock. Um, in the years that I've sat here, I've never heard, uh, Mr. McBroom tell me he was burdened with having to make this decision of the hiring and being over the, um, chief of police. It's been challenging, I'll give you that. There's been a lot of challenges there. Um, but as Mr. Bullock said, um, then why wouldn't council want to take care of every department? And, and we would just run the city. Um, so, so no, um, to me, it's politicizing that department, and I can't find any benefit to it. Um, and I want to be one of the ones that says, um, I am also troubled with the word burden. And I, Mr. McBroom, I think you've done a fabulous job, so thank you.
Mr. McAdonny?
I want to be very careful in my response. I want to ensure I heard clearly what you suggested because I thought I actually heard something beyond what I've just heard, uh, council members Carson and Bullock respond to. Are you seeking a charter amendment to have the chief of police report directly to the council? Or simply the council lead the selection process?
The council lead the selection process, it's just the same as the city manager, the chief of police would be up here, um, on the advising of the, the daily actions of this, of the city and, uh, reporting to us, just like the, you know, when it comes to evaluation, we would do the evaluation, uh, for the chief of police. Now, like I said, that's in a charter, I'm not, I'm not saying anything else. It's just that even before Mr. McBroom, um, was hired as city manager, uh, the other city managers that were in the position, the chief of police position was, was, is, is critical. And there's always been controversy on, on, um...
I, I'm sorry, I just, I need a very clear and straightforward answer because I'm still hearing two things. I don't need you to repeat what you said earlier. Are you suggesting that this council simply be authorized or authorize itself to perform the selection process? Or that the chief of police would report directly to the council? Because you, you keep inferring things that sound like you want a direct reporting relationship, i.e., perform the review. Can you just be brief and clear?
Okay, I'll just clarify, it's the same function as reporting and all, as far as governing, as the city attorney, city manager, and, uh, municipal judge.
Okay, then I, I am afraid that I did hear what I thought I heard, and, and I will, um, frame my, my response very carefully. No, a- a- and no for the following reasons. We are a part-time city council, paid on average ten thousand dollars a year, whatever it works out to before taxes. We are a city that, yes, one day will be over a hundred thousand people. Today, we are just barely halfway there. The, the overhead of that role, of, of performing the managerial functions over that department, over that role exceeds the, the, the time and ability of any of the nine people that I've served with in my ten years and that I suspect we would see on this council in the short term. Uh, I'm not paid enough. None of us are paid enough to manage four senior executives, including one of which would be responsible for the entire law enforcement responsibility of our community. We have hired, and we have a contract with a city manager, a chief executive of this organization. We operate under a weak mayor, city manager form of government, which puts those administrative responsibilities in the hands of that individual. We have contracted for him, we have a review of his performance this evening. One of the things that we consider when filling that position is that this individual, as an administrator, is capable of running an organization, the scope and depth and breadth of which this city has. I don't know where this suggestion came from, but I would respectfully ask that this is the worst possible way to bring it forward. Uh, we are in the middle of a phenomenal process with our, in partnership with our law enforcement, uh, employees, with the Department of Justice to heal and improve this organization. And to put something like this out there just creates, I just, I can't even get my head around why this would come forward. even get my head around why this would come forward. So, um, no.
Mr. Teeter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with what Jason just, um, established there and also, you know, the city manager has the insight to, uh, his HR people and he has the insight to the union. He, he does negotiate with them, he does talk with them, he does have the feel for their, uh, their background too and, uh, involving with the selection of the, the police chief, so I'll be voting against this too.
All right, I guess I'm going last. Um, you know, I wanna be fair to Mr. Douglas, I know he, he has, talks to residents and has a certain rapport. Um, I understand, at least I, I believe I understand why his thought process is the way it is on this particular item. Um, I will tell you, at some point in time, this council will have a paid mayor, full-time type mayor scenario. It'll be long past when I'm around, but someday Commerce City's gonna grow to the point where maybe they become an Aurora or, uh, you know, have, have to have the capacity of a full-time mayor. Um, we have a charter that we've followed for many, many, many years. It's the first time I've ever, um, heard a suggestion of, uh, pulling, uh, director or department head out of that mix to, to sit as an employee of the council. And, you know, I, I don't in any way intend to discredit Mr. Douglas for, um, trying to come up with ways to, to try to better the city. However, in that process and in that thinking, um, I don't think now's the time. Um, I think that time is somewhere in the future and, and I know it will happen, but, uh, under, right now, at 53,000 in population, um, and, and Mr. McAldoney, you stated it very well about the fact that we've went through the DOJ and we're in a process and we're, we're healing the department and, and we need to build morale and there's a lotta things that go hand in hand with that. And, uh, a, a change even if it was supportive could, could upend all the, all the gains that we've made, um, and that, that department has made. So, uh, respectfully, um, I don't think now's the time. Um, I don't know when that time may be, if it ever comes around. It'll be a whole different group of people making a decision, um, to determine that. Um, I, I think the police department is, is starting to operate much smoother than it has in the past. And I can only think back to the last several years of where I've had to go and give depositions and be standby, to be put on a stand to testify in police department type hearings and stuff. I know that the city manager has had to be down at the courthouse testifying on a regular basis over police department, um, discrepancies that, that take place. And I would be the first one to tell you, we absolutely don't get paid to, to oversee that kinda managerial decision. Um, we, I, I, we hire and, and manage or oversee, um, the city manager for a reason, uh, and we have to put our faith that, that he's capable of doing the job and, and overseeing those underneath of him, whether it be, um, the chief of police or public works director in the back or finance director, um, they all fall under the city manager and there's, there's a certain level that, that takes place. If we see that the city manager's not performing at a level, the, of expectation to this council, regardless of what department that is, we as a body of one, not a body of nine, have the ability to give direction to the city manager to fix whatever those problems may be. And if they're unable to remedy what those concerns are, we have the ability to hire another city manager. So I think we do have the controls that the residents that put the charter together, we have those controls in place today. If we feel that it's burdensome or a problem for the city manager to manage every department that's under him and then we could take action to replace him if we so desire. But frankly, I think, uh, and after the 20-some years I've been with the city in one capacity or another, I think Mr. McBroom's doing a good job for the city. And so, and, and with the turnaround that I'm seeing in the department and with the selection that we have of Clint Nichols as the chief and, and the organization, when I see the FOP and other members show up to a study session and say, "Things are getting better," after the many, many years of turmoil, that is a pleasant surprise. Um, so, right now, um, I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and, 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 uh, be rude to Mr. Douglas about, uh, my perception of how the process works and why the charter was written the way it was and where we are at in time for our community and, and what the, uh, rules and, and authorities are of the city manager, but I, uh, am not in favor of, uh, making a charter amendment this election season. Seeing no other discussion, um, Mr. Douglas, I'm gonna lay it back on you.
Okay, I appreciate everybody's, uh, feedback on that and, um, you know, this is nothing against you, Brian, as a city manager, this is just something I've seen over the, even before you, uh, controversy we've had in department and all. Um, I think you're doing a great job as city manager, these are just some of the things that I've, I've noticed in, in that department, so, um, that's why I asked, we have a, um, I wanted to ask this body, not the next ones to come up, because you guys, uh, you know, we have, uh, four that were, well, three out of the four were here before me and I, I appreciate your service, uh, to the city and so that's why I brought this up with this council that's sitting and not the council that's coming in, so. I appreciate everybody's, um, feedback and dialogue, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Douglas, thank you for, uh, bringing forward some administrative business. I, uh, wanna give you the benefit of the doubt of, as to where things are at right now. Are you going to, do you want to drop your request or you wanna make a motion?
No, at this time, I'm gonna drop my request, thank you.
Thank you, that's all I need to do.
Appreciate it.
All right, is there any other administrative council business to come from the city council at this time? Uh, Mr. Teeter, no?
No, I'm sorry.
No problem. Uh, Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just wanted to bring this to council's attention. I mentioned, uh, probably last month, the meetings that we're conducting, um, for emergency services. Originally, I had worded it for, for women and children, but I think it's necessary to probably reword that to residents because it could be a, a variety of residents that could use these services. Um, the one thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, I did request, uh, with Brian if we could possibly have a staff member present to start taking meeting minutes because these discussions have become more robust. Over the last two meetings, we had two county commissioners that attended, um, Hannah from, uh, Perlmutter's office attended and so there is, uh, definite interest in collaborating as one unit to, to see how we can, uh, create such a program or tap into the resources that are available that maybe not all of us are aware of together as a group. Excuse me. So, my request with Brian, um, to, to have a staff person present, I needed to bring that present to your attention because of the fact that, sorry, I'm having a hard time here. It would take staff time. Um, we're looking at about an hour, hour and a half possibly for meetings once a month, but then there's also the time of typing the minutes, editing distribution, so I'm not sure what that looks like completely, but, um, I just think it's necessary because there's, there's just so many topics that we discuss and between all, all of us trying to take notes and share notes, it's just, it's, it's become a lot more than what, what we anticipated.
Restate the name of your organization, please.
So originally, I had just, when I sent the meeting request out, it was worded as emergency services for women and children and I think we should reword it to residents, not just necessarily women and children. Um, Adams County, when I, when we received, um, notification that the commissioners were going to attend, they brought forward some resources that we actually weren't aware of, um, and then they were actually not aware of certain things that, that were available from, um, other organizations in this group. So, there is definite interest, uh, there's a matter of policy, there's a matter of funding, um, this is gonna be a, a long, a long road ahead of us, but it's definitely something that has brought attention to that and they didn't realize that we no longer have a safe, safe house here within the city and that residents have to travel as far as Aurora, which many of them don't, um, or just nearby cities and a lotta times, it's just a, a one-night stay. It's not something to get them to the next, you know, position where they can, you know, be in a better place for themselves and their children. Um, there's programs that are available that I believe the city may be able to participate in, but we, I don't know what that scope is just yet, we're just on the tip of that iceberg. So, basically, long story short, is, is basically requesting council's permission of obtaining a staff member for our monthly meetings.
All right, I'm gonna go to the discussion. Mr. McAldoney.
Thanks for bringing this up. Um, I, I have a, the faintest recollection of some comments at a prior meeting about your involvement in something along these lines, but I'm not sure if it's just me or if the others up here don't have enough depth of understanding of what you're into that we would be in a position to provide an authorization or recommendation for staff support. I think if anything, I would be comfortable asking that this be added to a study session where we could have a more formal update, but it sounds to me like, just from what I'm hearing now, this has a health and human services component to it, which sounds very county to me and something that we would find a way to lock arms with the county on, but that the county would need to run point on this, so I, before I suggest that it makes sense for us to allocate resources, I'd, I'd be open to, um, if you're open to it, uh, having some looser conversation around this at a study session where we could all ensure we have a clear understanding of this and then align on, on some, some direction.
All right, Ms. Carson.
Um, Ms. Elliott, thank you. And, and I expressed my feelings that night, I do remember, um, but it was through a brief reporting out that we received this information, if I'm correct. And, and as Mr. McAldoney said, I need to have a much more in-depth understanding of, of what this is going to entail and I was also believing that maybe this is something that is, is services that the county would provide. I don't know what department, if we were looking at this, what department we would be looking at that would, this would come out of, um, where the budget that would come. So, even though I am fully supporting the whole entire idea that you're bringing forward, I do think that we need a better understanding of, of what we're looking at and, and where we need to go with that.
Mr. Amador.
Uh, for another topic, not on this one.
Okay. Um, I would just say, you know, Crystal, I think what you're doing is, is, uh, a good thing for our community. I know we lost the safe house, shelter, um, I know there's need, uh, but as long as I've served on the city council, which has been quite a long time, um, we have boards and commissions, as you know, that we operate like cultural council and things of that nature. When it comes to more of the social service type venues, they have all been nonprofit organizations that operate, um, some of them in our community, some of them countywide and those are all, have all been things that we have been supportive of through things like QCF. Um, I don't know that we have, have placed, uh, the only one that even comes close would be, uh, oh, for Christ's sake, I was the vice president of, I'm trying to think, no, um, in Derby, we used to do the Derby Days.
Community Enterprise?
Community Enterprise. They changed their name and I lost track, but Community Enterprise, uh, but I don't even know if we had staff support on that. But, um, I would agree with, uh, Councilwoman Carson and Councilwoman McAldoney that would be great to see what that structure is and talk about it at a study session so that we can decide if it's something that should be county overseen, that we can help fund it, funding for, if it's gonna be local and we help fund it as a nonprofit, or if it's gonna be something internal that would be more like our housing authority, which the only concern I have is where we make that step of providing social services and not providing social services, because that's a function of the county. So I would appreciate and prefer a study session. Any other discussion concerning the request from, um, Councilwoman Elliott? Seeing none, Councilwoman Elliott, do you want to, uh, set a motion, uh, for, for, uh, support for, for staff tonight or do you want to, uh, make a motion to bring it to a study session?
Um, well, let me just kinda briefly explain, it's not necessarily trying to get the city to oversee anything. I realize it's a county partnership and I realize there wasn't much information that I provided the last time, it was just a, it was just, we were in one meeting, um, but now after the second meeting, uh, it's getting bigger than what I anticipated. So, the ask really isn't about what we oversee and I'm happy to provide more information, that's not a problem. I would make a motion to bring this to a study session for further discussion. We do have a meeting that is scheduled here in the next, uh, week, next Wednesday, uh, and so I would probably suggest city manager for direction on that.
Right.
Just another suggestion for council's consideration, I would, based on my conversations with Councilwoman Elliott, the meetings that have occurred so far are more in the exploratory phase, trying to understand where the gap in services is. Uh, the staff support that Ms. Elliott has requested, I think is within our ability to provide, I just didn't wanna get outside of the council policy that limits staff support to one hour. What might make more sense is to have us provide that staff support to Ms. Elliott, allow them to have a few more meetings and see, and, and at a point when it starts to take a little bit more shape, then perhaps have a study session that we could, uh, help Ms. Elliott with to provide a more comprehensive update for council about kinda how it's shaping up. Uh, a study session this early in sort of this exploratory process might be premature, but I do think it'll be a benefit if we have, uh, just some administrative support to, uh, help Ms. Elliott add some additional structure to it as they continue to explore what the needs are.
Okay. Um, I would then, again, ask Ms. Elliott if she'd like to make a motion to allow for that staff support, uh, for a certain amount of time up until we can have a study session once we have an idea of what shape this is taking.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for the clarification. Um, I would agree, that's probably the best route, just because we're in the learning stages of, of what's there and what's not there, so, um, I guess to make a motion to request the staff person available as needed on a monthly basis, um, with minimal, uh, staff time as possible, just for meeting minutes and, and distribution.
Can I amend that to allow for a limited amount of time until a structure has been put together? Thank you. So there's a motion with a, an amendment, um, Mr. Bullock.
Second that.
Is there any other discussion before I call the vote? Mr. McAldoney.
I'll support it, but I would actually ask for a further amendment just to ensure that those minutes are shared with this council so that we have insight into the dialogue along the way.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the second?
Yeah, can we count to three?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion, an amendment, a second amendment and a second. All those in favor, signal. Oh, is there more discussion before I continue? Okay. Councilwoman Carson.
Um, not that I'm not in support, but I still need a little more information of when these meetings are held, where they're held, what we're approving, is it up to one and a half hours a month, is it, I, I have no clue what we're approving, um, and who, who is setting on this, this, uh, and, and not that I'm not happy you're there, Ms. Elliott, but how did you get there? Um, I, I just need more information. I, I'm not sure what I'm saying that I'm gonna approve staff to attend, um, so if I can just get a clarification of those points of, um, there will be a new council seated here come December, um, is this a position that you voluntarily... Is this a position that you voluntarily just started attending? Is this a position we're going to put a council member on? If we're investing that kind of money with staff time, I, I would really like to have a little more insight.
I do have a motion and a second on the floor. Councilwoman, can you?
So, let me address that. So, I, how I got involved is just with all the different agencies that I've been interacting with, with throughout the community, I felt there was a need for all of us to discuss everything that we have, discuss, share our resources. So, that was the first meeting. And I recall mentioning it, but there was nothing enough to, to really expand on. Now with the second meeting, and the commissioners attending, it's real. They're doing research on their end, so now we're at a point where, okay, I'm not really sure where this is going, but I know that this is something that council does need to be involved in, and I will make sure that everybody gets the meeting invite information. But, and I, and my intent for the, for the minutes was obviously to share with council and with our meeting participants. I'm happy to get more information, I'm happy to make sure that that invitation is open to any council member. I understand that we do have to place a public notice appropriately. I'm happy to do any of that. This is, this is the tip of the iceberg, and to be honest, I didn't know, I don't want to say I didn't know what I was getting into, but I didn't realize how much greater this is, just from talking with people that work with our residents that need the services.
I still have quite a few questions that are looming out there.
All right. Well, I've got to have to cut, cut the discussion short. I do have a motion and a second, as amended twice by the council, to allow for some staff time for a limited amount of time to bring back something on structure. That's what I'm hearing. That's been seconded. I need to ask for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Councilwoman Elliott, please keep us advised as to when the meetings are and, and what the meetings are about. Mr. McBroom.
I believe Ms. Elliott said there is the next meeting coming up next Wednesday. Maybe you could share the date and time and location for any council members that would like to attend. If it looks like more than two of you will attend, we'll make sure that we get the meeting posted.
Okay. Keep that in mind, if you do have an intent on attending, please let our administrative staff know, so that they can post that meeting, so that there's not more than two council members present at that meeting, without it being posted. Any other administrative council business? Mr. Amador.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like for staff to outreach back to the Adams 14 Board of Directors. So, we met with them on Monday, July 30th, last week, and since then, I've been getting some correspondence from individual board members, wanting for me to meet with them on a Friday or a Saturday. And so, I reiterated to them that our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 30th. So, I'm not real sure that it was apparent when we were going to meet again. So, if we could just send some kind of notice to them that says, hey, we're going to meet again on the 30th, but I've also corresponded back, and I didn't want to overstep my bounds, saying I'd be happy to meet with you individually if there was something that was pressing, and I don't have an answer back from that just yet. So, if we could just reiterate that to them, thank you.
All right. Any other administrative council business? Mr. Douglas.
I just have one more. I had a, to see if council would look at, see how we could upper image here. I mean, our city has come a long ways. If you go on the internet, especially on Facebook and some other websites, it shows a, a poorly bad image of Commerce City. And, and see if we could maybe direct communication or, on the lines to, maybe even suggest to Facebook to take off the negativity that is out there about Commerce City, a video years ago portraying Commerce City. I mean, we're an industrial city, but it just wasn't a very pleasing video. And just see if, if that's okay with the council.
All right, Mr. McLeDoney.
First Amendment, I mean, the freedom of speech, somebody made a video, it's in the public domain, the internet is forever. Good videos, bad videos, tasteless videos are forever, and there is no ability to retract or remove those, because we want to, and we don't like their image, the image that they convey around, about our community. The, the only way to deal with that is to do enough that it offsets. And you will never solve the image issue for everybody, there will always be detractors. And so, I, I'm not sure what magic wand we think we can wave to solve content on Facebook or a video that was posted over a decade ago. With all respect, I just, the best, best defense for those kinds of things is a good offense. And I think we have done phenomenal things over the last five to seven years in particular in shifting the conversation. And certainly, the negatives will exist out there, but you gotta continue to pile on the good. And I, I don't, I don't know what to say.
Mr. Amador.
So, I believe Councilman Douglas's request is that you can basically reinvent yourself, but you can't re-Google yourself. And so, if you type in Commerce City, in general, there's some negative publicity out there. And I totally agree that there's things that we cannot change that's out there forever in social media. So, the request, I believe, is to come up with maybe a little bit of PR, which we have been doing with 2K and whatnot, but a, a really good video to say, hey, this is why you want to move to Commerce City, there's a good aspects of Commerce City, to keep re-messaging what the city is doing and what this council has done in general. So, I think on that motion, I would, that is a motion, right? Okay. I would second that motion.
All right. I need to get clear on what the motion is. Mr. Bullock. I have a mo, I guess now I have a motion, which I didn't know I had.
Wait till you get to discussion.
And now I have a second. So, I'm going to ask for discussion, Mr. Bullock.
There is a video that the mayor made. When did you make the video that, on the arsenal? There's a video that I've made that was on the arsenal for Live Well. We have exactly what you said, because I know, I can't, I'm trying to remember that.
There was one on, on the new housing in Buffalo Run. I think they taped that video, I was at Buffalo Run when they taped it. But we do have some positive pieces that will help offset, if we can get those front and center on our website, to where people, when they, you know, when they search Commerce City, they have the opportunity to see some of the good, too. I think it's kind of where you're going. Is that not, not correct?
Yeah. You just, motion is if we could add some positive messaging for Commerce City.
Okay. And then I have a second, correct? Mr. Amador.
Correct.
Okay. And I have Mr. McLeDoney.
I, I think a motion with such specific guidance is premature. I would, this would sound like a broken record, I would request that this be taken to a study session for conversation. What we're talking about is marketing and branding. And anybody who watches America's Funniest Home Video, which predates the internet or the latest YouTube clip, the things that get views are the things that are a little off-color, that are maybe not so positive. And so, one of the other interesting things about the current world is when you talk about something like the bad video that you're describing, it prompts people to go out and Google it. And the way that the internet works is the more people Google things, the more they appear in the top results. So, the only way to offset that is to come up with significant other content that is out-Google versus the thing that you want to hide. So, again, I think we need to have a conversation about what you're trying to solve for, without giving staff specific and explicit guidance on, go do this thing, because depending on what you're trying to solve for, there are any number of different strategies and tactics that could be employed. And so, to me, this is a question of council priorities, what are our objectives, what desired outcome does this fit with? I can see in my head how this fits into, into those, but we've been working so hard as a council to narrow and focus ourselves on the things that have the greatest impact and, and result relative to the priorities that we've collectively set. If this is now one of those important things, I will tell you that it's not cheap or easy to solve the kind of thing that you're trying to solve. So, where does it sit relative to all of our other priorities? And is that something that warrants conversation by this council in a study session environment, so that when we sit down to the budget discussions, we are not hit out of left field with another request for something that we're not all aligned on? Right? The, the challenge is, this could be something that's a very positive conversation, that we all might be very bought into, but when it's just thrown out there like this, without prior conversation with any of us, or to, to help collectively groom or, or think through an idea before it's just thrown on the dais, like, give a call to any one of us, right? And say, hey, I've been thinking about such and such, what do you think? Right? And it's called spitballing. And you start to think about it, and then when you have something that actually has some meat, then it might make sense to say, hey, let's grab some time with Brian and staff and talk about it, and see if it makes sense. And then we can come to council and say, hey, during administrative council business, we've been toying with this idea, we'd like council support to sit down and talk about this in a study session. As opposed to throwing something like this out from left field, where I, I just, I, I want, I don't want to sit and, but I want to help support this, but it's got to be approached in the right way, so that it, the right outcome happens, right?
No, I, I totally understand it. It was just to get to people talking about it. We were talking about this on Friday, me and, and Councilman Amador were, and discussing this. So, I would love to see this on a study session, a future study session, if so deemed, this council.
So, the way things sit right now, I have a motion and a second on an item that I don't know if it has support. I'm going to go back to you, Steve, if you, if you are standing behind your motion, and Mr. Amador is behind the second, I will call for a vote. Your alternative is?
Yeah.
To pull your motion and send it to a study session?
I like to pull my motion and send this to a study session for further discussion.
Okay, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All right. Now, I'm open for a second to send this topic to a study session.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. McLeDoney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and we'll look forward to that conversation. Is there any other administrative council business? Mr. Amador.
So, the city relaunched a, a new website, and I was looking on the website for, under building permits and building department, and I couldn't find what codes the city is designing for engineers and architects for the services. So, if we could just maybe add a link on what codes the city abides by, I know the National Electric Code 2017 just changed, so it would eliminate a lot of calls to the Building Department if we just had it easily on the website.
Okay, that's easy enough. Any other administrative council business? Seeing none, we're going to move into reports. Don't leave.
We did send out via email late this afternoon, this week's edition of the City Manager Update, but instead of reviewing those items, I wanted to share some good news about the community. For those who were at the AdCog Dinner, you've heard this news already, but we have successfully worked with United States Postal Service to change the address of the city's new recreation center, such that it will have a Commerce City zip code. So, the new recreation center will now be in the 800-22 zip code. And to commemorate it, we did this mock-up of the new address. Of course, we don't have an official name for the new recreation center yet.
Yeah, uh, ZDVD.
So, soon you will be taking action on names for our two recreation centers, and then we'll update this nice-looking board to plug in the name of the new recreation center up north. But we thought it was exciting news worth sharing with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last thing we want is Brighton to take credit for that.
That's right.
Yeah, they were gonna. I didn't let them, but they were gonna. That's almost as good as a big check, just so you know. All right, City Attorney.
I have nothing exciting to report.
Nothing exciting to report. Should have reported something, you got an evaluation tonight. Get it, get it on the good side. I do have a few things I want to report. I'm going to start off by publicly wishing Steve Douglas happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I know we celebrated the, last at the study session, but first public meeting that I've had the opportunity to wish him a public happy birthday from, from the mayor. So, we've had several rotary meetings over the last three weeks, two, which I haven't been able to attend, but, which is odd for me, because I'm usually at all of them. Telephone Town Hall, I understand went very well. I was not there, but several council members were, so thank you for the Town Hall. I wanted to say again, thank you to the Cultural Council for the Concert in the Park series that they put on. It is getting much more attention and much better attended. So, I think it's a very worthwhile event. It helps bring residents together, so keep up the good work. Area Boards, myself and Mr. Teeter were at the Area Boards meeting, and there's a lot going on, primarily from the city. You know, we, we had this Area Boards meeting, was over at the new fire station headquarters, right here next door to City Hall. I think I've toured it two or three times now, a great facility. But the Area Boards, I think, the most important function is that link and relationship to each other that we serve in this community, so that we can have those updates from the water district, the school district, tri-county health, what's going on at the arsenal. There, there are a lot of different moving parts, and so we get a very short snippet update. However, it does keep us in the loop. So, I enjoy the Area Boards, and I'm glad that Rick's serving on it with me, and, and it seems like that continues to function well. I want to talk about the AdCog Dinner, Commerce City hosted, kudos to the staff. And I want to especially call out Lisa Gallegos for the efforts. I was a little skeptical about how this was going to work, in a construction zone, in an empty gymnasium that's concrete with dust and debris. However, our staff hit it out of the park, and, and we were really able to show off some of the insight of our new facilities and what 2K has done for our community to some of our adjoining jurisdictions within the county. So, congratulations to staff for, for making that happen, and, and actually doing something outside the box. I think it was appreciated by all who attended. NADA, me and Rick continue to attend the NADA meetings. They are still trying to narrow down the priorities and how those priorities get set. We're looking forward to that coming to a close here pretty soon. Most of the discussions about RTD and the money that they don't have. So, it just is like a broken record every time we go to NADA when it comes to our light rail system and even our heavy rail passenger system, it's just, where's the money going to come from? And this last NADA meeting, we were called out, in a sense, because of our 2K ballot measure that we approved. The, the, the president of the organization is Herb Ashson from Westminster. And right now, regional transportation and state transportation are top of the list for the legislative action to take place on how to achieve improvements for all of our roads and bridges statewide. And one of the things that came up and why we were called out is And one of the things that came up and why we were called out is because if there is to be a group effort to try to do a collaborative measure for tax increases for transportation, why would a city like Commerce City want to participate? Because they've already stepped out and started taking care of their own needs for transportation with a one-cent sales tax increase, and that would negatively affect cohesiveness in a regional approach to a tax increase for transportation. So I helped set him straight on why we did that, and I still think that we are way ahead of the game when it comes to these other cities and their lack of ability to maintain their roads. At least now we have a funding stream, and our residents are getting to see the action that we're taking to improve major transportation pieces within our community. And I feel very grateful that our residents did that, because these other communities don't have a means today, because there is no transportation plan moving forward at this time. So that is kind of a brief update on NADA. Let's see, District 14 joint meeting. It was an interesting meeting, to say the least. I did receive some calls by board members apologizing for lack of, lack of content on the district's side. They didn't feel it was their place to step in and take the lead on trying to add more content. Some of the concern is future, that didn't come up in the meeting that we had, that they wished would have come up in the meeting that we had, was what do we do about new schools? What about STEM middle schools? What's happening with the dog track? Is there opportunity for us to buy it? And, you know, so some of that discussion, I think there was an intent from some board members that wanted to have that discussion that night. However, they didn't want to overstep their authority and bring those things forward. So I think there is plenty, based on the conversations that I've had after the meeting, plenty of content for future meetings. But we need to start setting an agenda, and we need to make sure that we get a direct response from the district on agenda items and content that they would like to have in that meeting. Because honestly, I felt a little bit odd after I laid out the city's plan and turned it over, and we got about a five-minute piece on turnaround, and then it was like silence, and I felt kinda uncomfortable. And I picked it up pretty easy, and we just started giving more information about what the city's doing. But I want to make sure, and I'm saying this openly in this meeting, because I want to make sure the district hears me loud and clear. I want a good quality relationship between this council and the Board of Directors for School District 14. I want to make sure we go over serious content that is important to both the district and the city, to improve the quality of education for the residents of the community, therefore helping the city thrive, because it has that much more to offer. So I'm reaching a hand out to the district to try to provide more content for more discussion. And if it means getting down to those brass tacks, that the issues that people don't want to talk about because they're sensitive, I am all about being able to talk about the dog track property, where we're at, what we're doing with it, and if there is, this doesn't happen, then what's next, what's next, what's next, on down the line? But I also want to talk about what other properties the district has, and what are opportunities that they can foresee with other properties. I don't want to just focus dog track. I think we need to focus district-wide, what are options? And how can we be supportive in some of those options? Because I also want the district supportive on what the needs of the city are for development of infill. And I'll leave it at that, and hopefully I didn't overstep my bounds.
Nope.
But I think it was important to say tonight. That being the last item on my reports, I'll see how many calls I get tomorrow to discuss those kind of items. So that brings us towards the end of our council meeting, and I want to do something a little bit different than is laid out in the agenda. I want to take a pause from the council meeting. I don't want to close the meeting out. I want to take a recess and enter into the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, because I want to come back into the council meeting to go into executive session. I think it's important that we take care of the Northern Infrastructure piece before we go into the executive session, in case there are folks here who want to hear, or at home, that want to hear what we're talking about with the Northern Infrastructure before we go into executive session. So therefore, I'm looking for an amendment to the agenda. Yes, sir?
Before we do that, can I go over a report?
You want to add to my report?
Absolutely.
Sure, go right ahead.
So to add to the reports, Councilman Douglas, Councilman Bullock, and myself attended the Saborad event, which is the main event for the Hispanic Chamber of Converse. It went out off without a hitch. But more significantly, this Sunday, there was a motorcycle event that was publicized on social media, and the caption was "Kill the Streets" is what it was. And I want to give kudos to our police department, who handled the congregation of motorcyclists. There were a good 300 to 400 motorcycles that appeared in our city over at the Old Gala Gardens, or Tradición now, traditions is what they call it. And the event went off without incident. The PD did make communication, and really good communication, with the organizers of the event to make sure that they were not having a significant impact to traffic within our community, as they did last year on I-25. So again, I really want to give kudos to the police department for, one, having a presence, two, being professional and having good communication. So I was there, I just witnessed it, just to see how this thing was gonna go, and it went very well. So that's the end of my reports.
All right. Thanks, Councilman Amador. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, want to add to your report. On Saturday, August 5th, went over to Adam City, back-to-school kickoff. Event was from 8:00 to 12:00, but the people, the parents and children showed up at 6:45 waiting for this offensive start. And the first 350 kids received school supplies and backpacks, and it was such a great turnout. Some of the folks were picking their tables up early because of majority of the people came early. And I'll let council know that on August 24th, the discussion for the on-ramp to Penya will take place, and we're gonna go into executive session. I'm gonna meet, get with Maria to go over some more market conditions. The scope changes in the fact that we had to do the NEPA report, and then also the design percentage at that time, back in 2014. So just letting you know, there's an update on that. So the next meeting is August 24th. Thanks.
Yep. All right. Looks like I have a bunch of folks that still want to communicate to the public. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir, I want to add to your report. I belong to Shorters AME Church, and yesterday they had a prayer service for the ditch-to-ditch I-70 reroute. And I was there, and in order not to upstage my pastor, I kept my mouth shut. But, you know, they pass these out, and they, one of the things that it says on the back that a comprehensive study to reroute the I-70 to I-270 and I-76, and make I-70 that is now existing a parkway. And it's going to benefit the residents of Swansea, Laria, and Globeville, except that it's going to benefit them in a way that they will not be living there anymore, because if they make that a parkway, they're going to build nice townhouses and apartments, and all the people that are living there will be priced out, just like in other areas of the city, Five Points and different areas, where the residents that have lived there for many years are now, can't afford to live there because of property taxes. And if I-270 was to become the major route to change from I-70, it would have to encompass 12 to 14 lanes. And seeing how you can do that in the Sand Creek direction, that would be coming in the Commerce City direction, which they say has never been explored. Where I've been on that board for the last 12 years, I was one of the original members when they started talking about moving I-70, tearing it down, all the different options. And so what I would really love for them to do, and is get a forensic accountant, and some of those people that really want to do this move, I would like to look into their background and see how many of them have been buying a property for the parkway, and to see if it's going to be a benefit to them to move, which would be a detriment to the people of Commerce City, to move it over here, because there is no way that we've discussed this, we've gone through all the different options. Moving it onto 270 and I-76 is not an option that is going to benefit anyone. Where it is at now is where I-70 is moved through the city, and to not take the Viaduct down, it's going to come down, but either they're going to come down through a demolition process and build the highway, or it's just going to fall down one day, and then somebody's gonna say that nobody had forethought to do this. So I'm going to meet with my pastor and show him, I've got papers from way back, and I can show him CDOT papers from, I think it was 2005 when I first got on that committee, that this isn't just a Johnny-come-lately ideal that they're trying to perpetrate. This is something that's been examined and discussed over the last 12 or 13 years. So any of you that saw this on TV last night, I do pray to a higher power, but I pray to a higher power that is going to make us make rational decisions, not just decisions that are gonna benefit a few people.
I'd like to say it's important to this council to get information about when you're gonna have your sermon on "Dig the Ditch," so that we can be prepared to come and support you. Honestly, I believe the whole I-70 thing has been vetted and done, and I'm excited about them getting some contractors in place to quit kicking this dead horse and start digging the ditch. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you.
Mr. McEldowney?
I have comments for both Mr. Douglas and Mr. Bullock. For Mr. Douglas regarding the 470 item, this is a great example of a positive that gets perceived as a negative. I'm not sure if you've seen the comment thread on Facebook. I quit paying attention and trying to respond, because people aren't wanting to listen. But the recent city manager's report highlighted the, your effort to try and get them to rethink the skin in the game, for all the right reasons. The perception by the public in translating that very benign piece of information was somehow that we weren't doing the right thing, that our project, through our own missteps, had run into difficulties, and that this project really needed to be given over to Denver to make sure it was done right. So we know that the project would never happen if that were to happen, that it's only in the place that it is because of the good work of this staff and this council. I think the reason I bring this up is to tie back to my earlier comments. We, as a council, have to be incredibly thoughtful in terms of what comes out of our mouths, how it comes out of our mouths, and what context is attached to things that we talk about. I have spent the last decade trying to counter misinformation on social media. I don't see a lot of other people doing it. I'm running out of energy, frankly. And at the end of the day, it's up to all nine of us and the others in the community to do their very level best to try and refute those things that are inaccuracies. This ties into Mr. Bullock's questions and comments about I-70, because in both examples, every bit of those processes have been public. Every bit of the discussion has happened in an open meeting or through a public process. In the case of I-70, you had an incredibly lengthy process. I remember when I-70 was being talked about in conjunction with light rail when I lived over off of 34th and Blake, and I was in an impact zone. And so I was part of neighborhood meetings before I lived in Commerce City. The key is, people don't follow all of those things because they're not paid to, right? And on any given day, at an even moment, most folks in the community have other things that are more important to them until the thing in question is very important to them, right? And so when somebody's stuck in traffic on Tower Road, and they're frustrated that the Penya ramp doesn't exist, it's easy for them to grasp to anything and construct their own narrative. And similarly, with I-70, you've got a decade, 15 years of dialogue that's happened, in terms of a solution that ultimately ran through a number of options and resulted in what's now going forward. You have people that don't like that. The processes have been public in both cases. I simply say this because as much as we want to control what people think, or, I shouldn't say control what people think, we want to ensure people understand accurately what's going on, right? Because it's in our best interest, it's in their best interest, we want to make sure that's the case. There's only so much you can do, right? So I just, my fingers are crossed in terms of the conversations with E-470. I think to the extent that you have the ears of individuals in the community, it's important to give them the context around what's really transpired here and how that's unfolded, so.
Absolutely.
Anyway.
All right. Moving on. If there be no further reports, I will ask for an amendment of the agenda to allow for the council meeting to be recessed into opening the meeting for the GID, and then we'll come back to the meeting to set the executive session. Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Bullock?
Move to, move to, I move to recess until after the scheduled G-N-I-GID meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilman Carson?
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second to recess into the GID meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried, and I'm gonna call the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District meeting to order. Will the clerk please, or secretary please, call the roll?
Chairman Ford?
Here.
Vice Chairman Bullock?
Here.
Board Member Douglas?
Here.
Board Member Elliott?
Here.
Board Member, Board Member McEldowney?
Here.
Board Member Diaz?
Here.
Board Member Carson?
Present.
Board Member Teeter?
Here.
Board Member Amador?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, we are all here tonight. We have one item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. There are three items on, no, there's only, there's only one item on the consent agenda. I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. McEldowney?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion to second. Will the attorney please read the title on the consent agenda?
Ordinance NIGID 158, an ordinance including certain lands into the City of Commerce City Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. For the record, the consent agenda is approved unanimously by the Board of Directors for the General Improvement Infrastructure District Meeting. If there be no further business to come before the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District, we are adjourned. We are... We are now back out of recess into our regular council meeting. And I'm open for a motion and a second to enter into an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Parents F for the Discussion of Annual Evaluations of the City Manager and City Attorney. Is, let's see here, Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey? I have a motion of second for the reasons that I have stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. We are now in executive session. And I'll come back in after executive session and close out.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
I want to add to your report. On Saturday, August 5th, went over to M-City, back-to-school kickoff. Event was from 8:00 to 12:00. But the people, the parents and children showed up at 6:45 waiting for this event to start. And the first 350 kids received school supplies and backpacks. And it was such a great turnout. Some of the folks were picking their tables up early because of majority of the people came early. And I'll let council know that on August 24th, the discussion for the on-ramp to Penya will take place. And we're going to go into executive session. I'm going to meet with Maria to go over some more market conditions. The scope changes in the fact that we had to do the NABO report and then also the design percentage at that time, back in 2014. So just letting you know there's an update on that. So the next meeting is August 24th. Thanks.